For seven thirty. At the notice of this meeting has been provided in important section three D of chapter two thirty one in public laws in nineteen seventy five. Common news sunshine law roll call please.
Paul Mear.
Here.
Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson.
Here.
Grace Anne Kelly.
Here.
Ryan Messinger.
Here.
Jose Maderas.
Here.
Phil Bellin.
Here.
Brad Nelson.
Here.
Ken Shalay.
Here.
Jeff Paletti.
Here.
Steve Di Renzo. Daniel McDonald.
Here.
They're right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every. I would be remiss if I did not bring up the date today. Federal eleven two thousand and one. You know, like that will be almost balanced. For all the people who have lost their lives and their lives have changed significantly since that time. Nice. Alright, so you know the college present. And hopefully the public are very common. A resolution when it's four thirty six twenty twenty three. The one remaining. Something else actually when it's been nineteen years after. Oh, respect the fencing hall.
Yeah, so this is just a resolution that has memorialized the consistency that everyone did not remember last week.
Right.
So we just need a motion to second. Everyone that was that voted that way the last time to make that recommendation can vote on.
We'll make that motion. Yes, sir.
Certainly.
Any further discussion? Ball ball.
Paul Mear.
Yes.
Uh, no, it wasn't here. Jose Reyes.
Uh, yes.
Judy Nelson.
Yeah.
Grace Anne Kelly.
Yes.
Ryan Messinger.
Yes.
Jose Maderas.
Yes.
Philip Bellin.
Yes.
Brad Nelson. Yes, okay, yeah. Ken Shalay.
Yes.
Jeff Paletti.
Yes.
Daniel McDonald. Yeah. He can. Cause he was the only member voting in the last one, so he was not one of the nine voted, so we can't. But Steve Di Renzo isn't here. Uh, it doesn't mean. Okay. Who was the second one? Jeff Paletti. Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, an application in progress. In the move forward. And we uh, while line adjustment. Make the motion that we deem the application complete.
Definitely.
Any further discussion? Everybody's ready to report. And what is fair? I guess. Sessions. And uh. We can set it for. First meeting um, October or we can do it for our next meeting.
Um, the next meeting might be.
Then they.
Um, well, what we could do is have Monica let them know that they can be on for the next meeting provided that they comply with those requirements. If not, we're just meeting on the. If you just want to check to see if notices required for a winter situation. The only other thing that might save us some of this. But I can take a look at that and. Get into that option if you're even do notice.
It's been bouncing around for quite a few weeks now.
Um, our next meeting is um, holiday, so our next meeting will be on the twenty third of October.
Yeah, didn't I?
The twenty third? What happened to and well, along this day?
Oh.
So the twenty fifth is younger before.
So there is uh. Okay, now it's easy. So wait, we we're not, we don't have a meeting on the twenty fifth. So we go first round before, down before, yeah. Uh, but.
Do not.
Time to meet us all. Yeah.
That's not one of the days that we said. I'm just gonna say we would have to see if we've. Noticed for that day, which we could certainly do between now and then, you'll need forty eight hours notice. So it's really up to the board. Do we think that was included in the original list at the beginning? We did not include in the original list because I did a calendar and I answered all the days that we do and don't have.
They know then then let them know they can do it quickly. Um, do they have intern?
Um, her sister's intern. So she's the one who drawn up whatever. So we have to notice forty eight hours before, which we can easily do. But let's not do that until we see whether or not.
It is on the municipal website.
It is. That may, let's just confirm. That's because we actually have the list or that's just by default.
Yeah, I recall that the only holiday that we had was the longest.
I mean, I can go run in the office and grab that because I have that.
We established the municipal holidays during the meeting. Yeah, right, I remember.
And then we established what meetings we were having.
So it might have changed. Yes. Ben, what are? September eleven and it's pointing to face.
Just make sure none of their professionals are coming in. Jewish person.
Well, I mean, again, we're we're listed, so what you're saying is we we have it listed as a notice of the meeting. We can give them the opportunity so I mean, they can notice in time when this is required to go there or.
That the next one would be a month later.
Correct.
And so it's either September twenty fifth or October twenty third. They're gonna be very bad on advertising. What's good, what's the commission time we have to get?
Yeah, they need ten, but I don't know off the top of my head how much the meantime your paper needs for. When it's actually published, but let me check the meeting.
It has to be the that comes out Thursday, I think it's the. To do that.
They're gonna have to get it tomorrow. And even then Thursday.
I didn't tell it work.
What?
In the past, I didn't tell it work.
Yeah.
We're still, we do the backup, we really do the carrier.
Yeah.
Alright, so don't you get.
Well, the other issue is that I'm not here tomorrow. I work on Thursday. I can come in and get that done.
Right, the tree word is. Application permit sheet.
We gotta look at this is. I made changes. And you know, Monica and I, we don't look at everything in the notes from the last meeting and. I'm still very confused as to what was intended with regard to. Numbers and how we're gonna calculate things, so I've got the ordinance itself. Uh, so the ordinance itself, if we look at. Uh, page. Four, six, with section. One up to dash seventy nine, we. Talk about fee. We talk about. Permit is not required for the removal of up to five. Then it says these fees begin with tree number eleven. But then we say one to ten, so I I guess the intention, and just wanna confirm that, is that. The fees begin with tree eleven. So essentially, the number of trees is eleven through twenty. Correct?
Yeah, I believe so.
Because it's starting with number eleven.
Why is that saying is eleven should be there?
Well, I I I'm just, I'm showing you the differences between the two.
If we say that first, your first six, five trees are no permit, anybody can cut down five with no permit.
Right, right, but six to ten is a permit, but no fee.
And six to ten is a permit.
Okay, so then, what we did here was for total number of trees to be removed. So I think that needs to be there somewhere, we talked about that. So then, I think that once we get down to the calculation, and I've got a total fee of language required based upon this, I think that. What we do is. It has to say eleven to twenty trees. That's where it has to start, so we can go one to five, no permit, no fee. Okay, six to ten, permit, no fee. Eleven to twenty, permit, ten dollars, fifteen dollars. And then the next question is, is it? This is confusing. Fifty, so I guess I have to go back, now now that I know what you're saying, it would be. Either ten or fifteen, whatever it is we're saying, and here, this says one to ten is ten. So I guess this.
Put it up on the screen right now from the website, which I think is the correct, correct way of expressing this.
And it's it's small, but I would add one to five trees, I would put no permit, no fee.
Right, that's what I've got to do yet, so I'll do that, no permit, no fee, six to ten, permit, no fee.
So the eleventh tree is gonna be the ten dollar.
Okay, right, so eleven to twenty is ten dollars. Because there is a revision in there of up to up during one year, that's it, yep.
Okay. Eleven to twenty trees is ten dollars.
It's ten, then this is fifteen, then we just keep going, twenty, twenty five, no, twenty thirty five. Fifteen.
It's blue, which page on the website is that, what you're showing on, is that the main?
Is it the? Yeah, that was the guy that explained it.
On the.
Where's the bottom, like you follow links, you follow.
Oh, we got an extra one here. Because we do eleven to twenty, alright, so eleven to twenty. That's a problem, because we did one to ten, with the ten dollars.
Well, it's one to ten over.
Yeah.
Over.
So it's almost.
So it's one to ten, so it's one to ten trees over, so start at eleven, so it'd be eleven point. That's that starts.
So yeah, it's already there, yeah, it is here, but then.
I think this is trying to say.
Over trees of the.
How many trees do you need to pay for? I need to pay for one to ten, it's ten per tree. Right, cause you got ten trees.
I understand it, I'm just trying to make this match this with this new way that we're looking at it, and it's kind of not, because this eleven, so maybe if we say eleven to twenty trees. One. Not to make this too confusing. But I think it's a little late for that. Because that's this, that's the one to ten. And twenty one through thirty five, twenty one, this should be twenty one thirty. Then right, that's where it is. Twenty one through thirty. Thirty one through.
I don't know, this better, I want to do this.
Because someone's gonna look at that, so what we wanted to do was to say the total number of trees. This, when you say one through ten. The fees begin with tree number eleven, I get that.
Or number of trees after.
Above.
Above.
So on on the form, but nine, twelve trees, then a lot says minus ten three.
Number of tree three, why?
And then put this schedule in down there, and this is.
Okay, I can do that, okay, so that's.
Yeah, that's the.
Yeah.
Total number of trees to be removed. I'm just trying to also make this easy, so whoever's doing it is.
Well, I think you should, you need to do that, total minus ten.
Yeah.
And then you have a new number to deal with, and then.
Then you have to complete continually for number all, right, so if you're doing. You're doing forty trees.
You're paying.
Yeah, I don't think that was deemed.
Oh, why are we doing the scale?
Yeah, we're doing.
That's what that was, that's scale, that's.
Can I make a question? And? Ken, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, no.
Perhaps we should consider doing this, make this the first truly electronic only forum. So the forum is only on the web. It will be designed in such a way that whatever the rules are, it will follow the rules and no one can go around the rules. And then it will generate an output that will go to um, to Monica. In paper form or an email form the day after somebody submits it, so you'll have a paper record of it.
Or at least you can use that too, right? Once the, once the forum is all worked, it'll then turn it out.
Because it actually doesn't come to me, it goes to John. So I would say have it print out and then have them bring it in as if they.
Yeah, doing this in Excel is really easy.
Yeah.
It is.
Well, I think there's a lot of. We're doing it in.
There's a lot of older folks that are in the town that don't, they're not gonna be happy with the viewers. I mean, we're all probably fine with that, but well, you could, you could maybe put an example on here to explain. You know?
And if John, John uses that, right, maybe it'll help. I don't understand why there's a problem when it comes to. So if you have, if you have thirty trees, you're gonna take down ten or three. The next ten are. That's A, and the ten after that are twice B.
So we could just write that in there, something like that in there.
Right, but I, you know what, uh, if memory serves me, when we, my goodness, we had this amount on the ping pong board for years. But it's not, it's the amount of trees, it's even if it's home, don't, ten isn't like free, and then we start charging from there, it's like. This is supposed to be the sum of that, one, you know, really, it's like one to twenty, one, you know, when we were talking about. It wasn't that, okay, I'm taking down, you know, thirty trees, that's the first ten of three. No, that that is all lumped together, you know, that you're gonna pay this fee for that, if you have. Over this, if the lumped in, they're lumped in.
So when you're taking a hundred trees, it gives seventy five hundred dollars.
It was, it was to, it would, it was to try to, it was to try. Correct, that was the, that was. All that.
If you're doing the math.
That was the intent.
Without, without.
Without, you know, the intent was that, that's all lumped together, it's not like, you know, okay, now I'm gonna deduct the ten to all the bad, you know, like, it just keeps, you know, but that's all. Going up, that was the intent.
But I get it.
Being one to ten.
Got one and seven?
For trees eleven to twenty.
It wasn't like, you know, the.
Cause we're on tree over ten, or tree. Right, cause you're doing this math for them.
But I think that was.
You know what I mean?
That's a lie.
And then the next one is. Ten, three, which is a hundred.
It was something, we needed, we needed something, everybody behind didn't want it to be, you're.
Yeah, the next one, the next one, the next one.
I think the way that you're explaining.
That's the.
That's like works perfectly.
Yeah, I, that's the intent, when we first, you know, we started, it's not like ten to thirty. And then it gets every minus out, or that helps.
That way they can do, they have a little bit of math.
Yeah.
Might still have that three hundred and plus sixty five or whatever, whatever.
I guess I completely misunderstood, so.
We, I believe the intent was, if memory serves me, when we were going through this, is that. It wasn't like. The first ten out of fifty of three, it was, it's all lumped, if you have like the ones, if you do one to ten. Yes, there is no charge or anything, but if you have. The eleven, which is part of this ten, then they're fifteen dollars each, twenty one to thirty five, they're twenty.
There is, but when you say eleven, is that eleven?
Well, that's the.
No, then that's how it sits.
But it's consent, yeah.
It's, it's, you're good, that's.
Okay.
And you say it like that, that matters.
Okay. Yeah.
Because. Yeah, we want this to be well aligned.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I just wanna make sure that they match also.
Yes, that's true, yes, I could not have this one, I'm ready.
Yeah, and when we say number, that could be a little bit confusing, so this. The numbers have to. They have to sign that, if that's, that I agree with.
I just didn't have that.
Alright, that's. Alright, let's try to have a burden. Okay.
Twenty one to thirty five, step one to fifteen, five. One of the trees over. What do you? Just building that out. That's how you learn, like, I'm doing that. Yeah.
Yeah, but I think what Grace is saying is that there's really no math involved, if I come in and say I wanna cut down a hundred trees. We don't take out the decoder, bring this in, they're free, and then they'll put through twenty one, we go to the chart and you say a hundred trees is seventy five dollars a tree, seventy five hundred dollars.
Correct, correct.
Well, no, because you're still permitted, no matter what, you're still permitted. You're, then you're five, and you can cut down, so no matter what, the time to take down.
Yeah, but that's taken into account the the fee that you put into the schedule. Like if you come in, you're taking a hundred trees down, when they came up with the seventy five dollars a tree, they knew that your first five were gonna be thirty. When they come up with that number.
Yes, the question that we have.
Because it's the between people.
Correct, that was the intent, that is exactly, exactly.
But that's it, it'll happen, because people are still paying more, the more trees you take in, the more it is gonna cost, but sort of matter of scale. Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, like, it's easy if you could just say seventy, you know, seventy five dollars a tree, a hundred trees, seventy five hundred dollars, I get it, the math is easy. But the issue that you come, come across there is, you're basically saying, here's a tree, this particular tree is gonna cost you twenty dollars if you're taking X number of trees down, if you're taking more than that. This same tree is now gonna cost you fifty dollars to take down.
Yeah.
But that's where, like.
It's a bomb, it's a danger.
I think so, but then I'll just do five permits for twenty, then one permit for a hundred, and I'll see what's sold, now fifty dollars.
Oh, the, the exemption is per year. Right, see, what you're saying is, I can just go like twenty a tree.
At fifteen dollars a buck.
There's a couple of these, and I can watch now.
Because we said that that the total number is per year.
Yeah, but then.
So they get one permit a year. No, the total number is per year.
So you do fifteen, the next time I come in, you're gonna be getting.
That's why we have a record of the permit. That makes it even worse than you, now the second time I come in.
You're paying more.
I'm all about doing less. It's, yeah, it's the, it's to keep people from doing.
Yeah, that was, that was the whole intent was, but then what do you, we've seen it now, now you've thrown a whole nother separate. Issue into this because what do you then do, so if I came in for a permit for twenty trees. Okay, and I paid the eleven to twenty fee, now I come in for the next one, now you have to calculate, okay, so now we're combined. So now you have, if if we're saying that this is gonna be. That price is per tree in that section, so I may have to collect more because you didn't collect it all this time.
No, because the, you did a certain number of trees. That's why it's a graduated thing, right?
Right, exactly, so that, that. The, the issue that it's graduated, not the issue that it's per tree, because otherwise, then you'd have to say, oh, wait a minute, now you didn't just do twenty, now you need fifty, so now we gotta go back and collect it back, you know.
First time, you was planning on taking down the tree, this is the character began. That's great. And it'd be just charge the second permit in the whole front, like, what you did, you'd have to be thirty at the fifty tree price, or something along those lines. It's easier to just move up the scale that stays consistent than to try and go back and tell people for stuff that they've already done.
What you have to do if that applies to your overall number of trees, right?
So what are we saying, that, that it doesn't apply to the total number?
We're saying that it applies to, it's graduated, so you come in for one for twenty trees, you pay fifteen dollars per tree over whatever. Then when you come in for another twenty, you take a look at the last permit, so now you're fully within the forty plus, so now you're paying.
That makes sense, it's one of your.
Yeah, right, if you pay the the lower price for the first fee, then you pay a higher price for the next one. Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, so then that's exactly.
I think you're just saying the same thing to them, you're saying the same thing, no, but they're saying something different.
No, I agree with them.
No, no, you're saying the same thing, they're saying something different.
But even then, if you come in for a second permit, what you were gonna say, you'd have to subtract from the, from the math, at least if you go with Jeff's suggestion, right, on that list of math. You gotta subtract what I paid on the first permit. No, 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 you just stop there, so you stop there. Right, I did twenty five, so now, of course, let's go to the other number, because I remember, you did fifteen trees. So the next stop is twenty five. So they're gonna pull out your permit, oh, you've cut down fifteen trees already, so now your next, so now you wanna cut down another fifteen trees. Your next five trees are at the ten dollar per tree of it, but the next ten, the next five, so you did twenty five, you did fifteen, sorry, you did fifteen. You wanna cut down another fifteen. The first five of your second fifteen are at the ten, twenty dollars.
That, in that bracket.
Or is in that bracket. The next ten of the higher are in the twenty one to thirty five. When, when you had kind of written to. On, on patient number two, because now you're not, you know, all this plus whatever. Letting a little bit of a brain to look at and say, okay, now you know the total.
I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that whoever's looking at this, whether it's us, whether it's someone five months, five years down the road, that this makes sense. I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that whoever's looking at this, whether it's us, whether it's someone five months, five years down the road, that this makes sense.
So would it be worth then to put in an example, like I just specified then?
Yeah.
For example, if you come back. Well, no, you, one example would do. If somebody came in and put in a permit for fifteen trees. That explains the graduation on it. If someone came in and put in a second permit for another fifteen trees, and then that would give the whole thing.
And I can do, I can do two examples too. I can do one where everyone comes in here, someone comes in for our trees. You know, and that's it, where someone comes in for, you know, correct.
Yeah, new suggestion would make it a lot easier to do online, but.
But then you need to have a history on it online also, right? Then you need to have a history online to put in a second permit.
Yeah. I, we do have to say something on there that, you know, per year. Isn't that.
I'm just trying to.
We had everything. It's not on, no, it's not on here. We did like out here, as we talked about and said. Well, I think it should, because it's. Because you don't want, you don't want people to think that they can game the system.
Yeah.
And then they'll come back and be surprised, oh, I thought I was gaming the system.
And yeah, how, how long has the permit been valid for? Is it from the day you took it out, took the following year, the same day, or is it?
By the year, I think we said calendar year, yeah.
Permit itself, so I could get out December like thirty, or thirty three.
Well, yeah, it's the year.
Ten more, ten more free trees that fall during the time, you didn't have to.
You could do December thirty first, you do your five trees, January first, you can do, you can do. So, in theory.
They do.
You could do, you could do ten.
That's really easy to do.
At, at that time of year, but then you're done for the rest of the year.
True. But again, you know, it's just like, you know, the kind of gift, if you wanna give the child something, I forget the amount of money, if you give them December thirty first, then you can give them the same thing on January first. And you don't buy that, so it's consistent.
The big difference is that you still have to get somebody to come and cut down those trees. You know.
Well, no, but.
And so, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more expensive for you to have somebody come.
No.
Two times or three times, then have them one time and cut all that.
Yeah.
That for people to do that, and lots of people just have to cut their trees down, so.
Well.
Well, why don't you just go apply your two permits?
What's that?
And not have to do any of the work. And then you get all three approved, and then you have to do that.
Any permit granted shall expire, oh, this is yours. It really is. Any permit granted shall expire after the passage, oh, that's a little bit, twelve months to the date of its issuance. So, well, no, but what is, does that mean that?
So it's a, it's a twelve month period.
I don't think that's what that was intended though. I think that meant if you get the permit, you don't have the trees down within twelve months.
Yeah, that, we did talk about that, too.
But I think that, I think that that should also be the, the time from when you take out the first permit to, to when.
Just going to the December.
It says the applicant may request an writing six month extension, so in that section, that, that's more along the lines of like a construction permit, people have a construction permit. You've got the year or whatever it is to be able to commence construction, otherwise you gotta reapply.
Yes, because that's right, because we had initially was construction, and I think that did get brought up.
But I think there was definitely something.
First of name, years later.
So I think this is why it would construct.
It'd be, it'd like, it would, that's the way that came up, of course. People hold on to it like this happened today. And then all of a sudden, three years later, we're building the same permit and.
So we're not doing the calendar year.
No, it's from the date of.
Then all sorts of matters, right?
From current expired, but not for the limited time that we can do it yet. No, no, it's the permit.
Removal that, alright, permit required, no, no person shall commence or allow to commence a remain following until they obtain entry removal permit. Removal that results in the loss of more than five trees per existing individual lot within any one calendar year. So that's what we have.
So it is calendar, calendar.
Alright, we got a little more changes to make, so make it clear. I'll do that, well, before the next meeting, is there anybody looking at it? And Brad, some more information that we gotta throw in there, type, size. That's required.
Alright, uh. Alright, we have the, we're doing four ninety, twenty, twenty three.
That's still good.
Letter, letter control, making any comments.
That's the, it's still table, right?
It's a table, and we can do it, it's working, we're gonna finish it.
Okay, so the reason it's on the agenda is that of the ten, nine have had comments done by this board. We'd like to get, Christine and I discussing, to get the litter one to the same status. So that when, if they are introduced and they have to come back to us, all will come back for consistency check. So that we don't have to have another comment back and forth for one out of the ten.
But the issue, the icisms, we voted on not inconsistent, that vote is null and void, right? Yes, because it hasn't been in Julius.
So it's really just.
Right.
So the intent on this was, uh, in the words, private property not owned by that person.
What do we say?
Do you want to do? I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go with the file of the others.
What's that? We could say if we were going to say that this was legal.
No, I mean, we really, we don't have to really vote on anything formally, so no one has any comments, and no one has.
So where is that whole package, you guys?
They, they, I mean, I think there's one that I've already worked, I can do it now, and the conference, the New Jersey Conference of Matters. Had a. Summer conference last Thursday, uh, with the DEP commissioner, La Cereza, you know, speaker, and gave a talk about the coastal and land flooding regulations. And then, uh, we briefly touched on the B to A, and so I just spoke to them after the meeting, shared with them what I, what we, what we did. And, uh, there are, the DEP has no intention of talking to us about eliminating any portion of the stormwater regulation. But they are willing to assist us with some implementation, and they had some unique ideas, uh, about working with surrounding community, you know, communities to be able to implement these. And they offered some, uh, let's say, planning and potentially even some dollars, additional dollars, uh, to do some sort of shared service for surrounding municipalities. So that is meeting that we're setting up, and, uh, we'll see where that, where that goes.
So where would the shared services be?
He agrees with it. Well, since we have the one that he did mention, but it would be, uh, essentially like a municipal stormwater authority, but rather than one municipality, we have the regional stormwater authority, share the costs. Uh, amongst each other, and then figure out what, what that taxation looks like, and that's what the authority would be, so. But even as minimal as possible of the cost that would be spread out across municipalities. The creation of that, that sounds like the EV is willing to, uh, also the cost.
And what would they do?
More covering.
Just that all this, so we could either, it's, it's tough, and we spend our local dollars, and then that unfortunately. We also have, you know, a like kind regional, that would be, you probably, you didn't have to value Andrea, probably would recommend one or two others, um, you know. At least in the short term, we know that we will all be similar municipalities, and get guaranteed there's stocks down the road, that, you know, one of the towns may wanna be more aggressive in enforcement than you. I don't know what the whole, like, that looks like, it's, we don't have water authorities here, so, uh, which.
Really, yeah, yeah. You know, it's not one size fits all for state. That's all.
So they're still able, that we have that meeting, and see if it's suitable, Beth, I will review any other options that we have.
Well, if we have to pay somebody to do nothing for town, who can hire them, whether to do that ourselves.
Did, Phil, Phil says we're not doing any of these ordinances. No, I, I shared them, we're, we're approached with, um, good things, but we asked them, we never had even a response. So if your response is that you're not granting any meetings, that, that's at least, like, you're better with that. We did have some suggestions, and then offered to sit down there for a year.
I mean, if everything came coming from the state, it's really not fair. Not, not the people in the head, because then they have nobody to doubt that, and at least they could come up here and yell at them.
No, that's right, I do, I do use the protector. So I'd say I'm thousand minutes, yeah, the buffer protector, and so we, you know, we already understand. And then there's also the pivot point. What, what, what's the ongoing expenses after all the mapping is done, and the cash basis are changed over? I mean, this is, what, what's the true, so what's the reality maintenance that would require an authority to maintain? Well, the, the initial investment over the next five years could be as high as two point nine million dollars, or, and our municipal budget is three point five.
What do you think from that?
Uh, from the cost, there's more licenses to it now, and the streets we've been, they're recording. Uh, there's a, I think we, I think we put it on the website, there's a comp with the other, it's a bigger more page. Document, it just gives you the basic, there's a, a file document that's like sixty pages back to that, but that initial one, uh, in the next five years. Then after that, you know, you're not buying two trees for every year, but it's so, most likely I can do staff member that's not going anywhere to do this for it. It's all going forward, at least a hundred thousand dollars.
That's for enforcement.
Definitely once, even that, that's really reported, so. Right, like right now, and this year is the first week of those, when the D W goes out and solves. They're supposed to, it's like right now, they come back, and most likely by the time they get done plowing the roads, they're on time and a half to double time. It was the last drop, and they can be released. Now they have to drive through the, the roads. And find excessive solving, sweep it up, weigh it, give it to a municipal, give it to the land use, land area.
We, we don't have, we don't have.
I have in mind, like, salt, cave.
And so, it's same thing with the streets reading, when it's streets reading, it's supposed to read, and then record the weight, and then that gets recorded, so it's all that.
So we need to have a scale up now.
Well, we need a scale, we need to record the document, and then you need somebody in the office to be able to do that, and our staff is slim. They're, they're really all doing a job already, there's no, there's nobody to add this to, without somebody else becoming pulled on or an additional employee, which is your own fault.
And what happens if we just say no?
We're trying to figure that out. Sure don't have that discussion, I'm gonna talk about the municipal. Because, I mean, I, I think, you know, worst case scenario, they could probably withhold, uh, you know, the state aid that we received, which is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Have they said it's like an unfounded mandate at this point?
So, this all started, uh, and I will say I was, I was the, like, the chairperson of the unfounded mandate to the league municipalities. We had a singular municipality during those meetings. The issue is we need one municipality to file that one of the mandated cases. We had one lined up, and their municipal attorney, um, left pretty much in private practice. And so none of us are willing, I would say, at this point to, to advance our tax law. So what happens if we get one to do? Then the other sixty league that are active, two hundred and ten, plus the league, was wanting to do an amicus, and then we all know. And we all thought it was a very strong case.
Oh, that sounds great.
What? This thing is all oppressive.
One hundred and eleven we missed.
No, but I think that's the only way.
That, that is the unreal way, but against, it's, it's which towns will end it up. I, I, I could, I really feel strongly, uh, uh, in opposition to these, we don't disagree with the stormwater rate cases, just how they don't matter at all. And likely those other hundred and eleven, but I'm not willing to, to take, you know, sixty thousand dollars ahead of our legal budget to go.
Here, you can't have, I mean, multiple, three or four towns get together, and they all purse money into it.
I mean, it's a possibility.
I was thinking that too.
I mean.
I mean, especially, you know, as you move up the tiers, all of that is, is higher, no.
The, 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 we're hoping to, actually, maybe the next threshold is the tier As, and go to A plus, those are bigger municipalities who have. Most likely a municipal attorney that's either full time, or they have a big enough legal budget, a lot of them are gonna fit in town too right now, that, one of them may be the first. So they will do the unfounded mandates, and we could find either another town going from B to A, or like roofing, going to do it. So we're, we are watching that, and Union's watching that as well.
If, if, the, the counties and the state don't start, like, that, it's just gonna get more burdensome.
Yeah.
We really.
Well, we also need, that, that discussion has to go with town, or even outside of your county. You need other town, other towns, other counties similar to ours, that are willing to push back, where, where trends not just getting pushed back from a hundred big town.
The initial, the initial.
Probably what we're doing, it's not a show, because everything.
You don't, the initial down is the best. During, that, and so they weren't willing to then create no journey.
But, but we couldn't, we couldn't, you had sixteen municipalities that were all the.
I think one, that'd be the lead.
Okay, but one of them, one of them could choose to be the lead, we could make a battle now, but if everybody, but if everybody goes in, well, more than a thousand bucks, but if everybody goes in. You know, ten thousand bucks.
I like it, but we have to figure out how that works financially. Yeah, it's, it's not like, you know, you gotta, it's all normally private companies, but we can probably figure something.
Well, we've done that in a town, I can't remember what it was, was it, was it Fort Worth? That.
We, we went with.
There wasn't Fort Worth housing.
We went with a few towns.
Yeah, there's a share.
Had to hire outside council.
Cause you're sharing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, so it's like a completely neutral council, that then every municipality can hire heads outside the nation.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I would, I wouldn't think that we'd wanna have our township attorney taking the case. I think that, you know, if we get, if we all pool our money together and hire special classes. Yeah, yeah, and then we're all, and if we're class.
That's, that, you gotta get the people that live in the town chips to start following track.
Yeah, but it's not like, like, Union hasn't even approached these yet, so I'm not sure, well, these are supposed to be done by the end of the year, so Union hasn't done a thing with them yet. But like, when we tabled ours, because we all filed for that hearing, it was Union, Beth, Ima, Alexandria, I'm making sure we're on the same page. I was gonna introduce their ordinances, uh, they're just kind of a long process. Union hasn't done anything with them at all yet.
They were almost done.
And, yeah, yeah, uh, we, you know, we're, I think we've gotten to a point where we can say we've done this good faith, but we need a discussion, so, but, uh. Yeah, I, I won't assume we can do it, we can do something. See, the council mandates is like a quasi judicial, so there's other regulations, we, we did speak to a former mandate council. Uh, what, what they, it's like a planning board, so they sit there, they're members of the council, uh, I, I'd actually been appointed to like, can't serve, because they're already, because if you're currently elected, you can't, you can't serve on them. But I think, I, I don't know if that regulation is applicable, we can go to, we can do an outside council. Because, because Fort Worth housing is actually like the national court.
Right.
Right, where the mandates is a quasi judicial, it's the only thing we do here.
Yeah, this, this would be, we, we'd still be suing them.
Well, not just on the mandate case, it's kind of like somebody, like, said, maybe said you need to get a variance, and then I'm coming here and saying, well, I, I don't think I do, can you determine that for me? It's not quite the same as a court, you know, filing a court here.
Yeah.
So I might have to do it as a group, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd backwards, right, you'd find a lawyer, talk to a lawyer, and say, well, if each one of us gave you five thousand dollars, these sixteen, would you be willing to take it?
I mean, yeah, considering we're looking at, at spending three million dollars, you know, I'm sure that towns would be willing to spend a little more than five thousand dollars, but.
I, I, I mean. We are looking at the, they still have to be, have to be cautious and balanced.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, the one thing that I would keep really cautious about is just not doing it, just saying, help. Because then the, they can come in and say, oh, okay, guess what, we're gonna do it for you. Cause then the E P can come in and say, oh, okay, guess what, we're gonna do it for you, and we're gonna charge you three million dollars a year. To do this, you know, and, yeah, so, I mean, we do have to be careful about that sort of thing.
Just the fact these guys have to go around having a sweep up salt. Gets a pretty.
It's, it's crazy. Yeah, it is, but the thing, the problem is, is that, you know, there, there's still government that's over us besides us, you know, and that's the thing, is that, you know.
The funny part though, too, is, you know, they're gonna need people to, as well.
Right.
So that's kind of it unless, unless you're gonna have someone in the E P that's assigned every single municipality that's gonna go around, I mean, after a snowstorm and make sure that excessive salt is cleaned up, I mean.
You said you're dialing back all the salt spreaders and putting less salt down the roads and you're not excessive salt.
I mean, yeah. There's more excessive salt on one seventy-three than.
Yeah.
That reason.
Well, yeah, county roads are the ones that seem to be the worst ones. As far as the excessive salt goes, cause, you know, Charles County.
I'm glad for you, with Union County, for Union County, the salt they waste is insane.
Yeah.
Insane. I couldn't believe it, and it stopped at seven eleven, the guy with the salt spreader. It was, it was an experience, we're gonna piece that. And he took more breaks, I said, you can't take so many drinks, I'm gonna go to sleep though.
I mean, I, I've seen a lot of places where, you know, the, this, the spreaders get all jammed up and they sit there, they, and they have to play with them, and it's in one spot, and, you know, and you end up with a lot of salt. I mean, you know, if the guys were just unjamming them, had a shovel with them, they just feed it back in the tub.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The best part is we came back to the yard for more salt after the guy wasted it. And the guy that was driving the truck and the guy that was on the loader argued for him having that. And I'm sitting there, like, this is insane.
Nothing's getting done.
All right. All right, any questions to open the public? So, Luke, second, I was in favor. Oh, my comment. Charlie, line up and state your name and block a lot of it, please.
Well, if you've lost, right? Uh, on the tree ordinance, what's the caliber specification? I didn't hear none, I got in a little way.
No, I mean, it was spelled that out. You know. But we should have been, the ordinance, it's probably against part of the. Yeah, I don't think it is either.
It's any ordinance itself.
That is. And who's, who's on the forces? Say if I want to cut ten trees, who's gonna come out and count, count twelve trees, cause you know what I'm saying, who's enforcement?
Alternate enforcement is the general officer, but people are, again, this has always been a discussion, and the neighbor calls and complains. So an officer goes out, he sees twelve tubs recently cut.
All right.
It can, it can go that way, we're not looking to be a police state here, but this, this was more enforcement for, uh. For developer, developer, or severe cutting instances.
Okay.
We have something there.
So, does this tree ordinance supersede a building to the law? So if I want to add a whole wooded lot, I want to put a house in it?
That's all in there.
That, that's a whole segment, actually, tree ordinance, new construction.
So that's, is that on additional of the building permit, that tree, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's under the same ordinance.
You can do an acre of property.
Yeah. Sure, but it seems one acre requires you from them.
Okay.
So you can clear an acre to build a house and, uh, set that system.
All right.
Again, Charlie, this is another thing the state is saying we have to have.
Well, it wasn't so much the state, it was that, this was definitely something that the Highlands.
The Highlands. This, this is one of the.
It's one of, it's one of.
Yeah, well, that is, that is part of that, too.
It's one of the brush to get it through. It wasn't forced.
This is basically for clear capitalism.
It, it's. We can't prevent their causes, it's wildlife management, but yes, if, if, if they're not, if they have a wildlife management plan, it's definitely the right.
Yeah, forest, if you're planning, you don't need a permit for that.
Right, and that's, this doesn't apply to.
Okay, all right.
So, again, this really, I mean, for everybody's, to remind everybody. When we got into the Highlands, the Highlands said we had to have this ordinance. And they were going to impose it on us, or we could write one, and we wanted to write one that was at the least. Yeah, in, intrusive as possible.
I would say that they're still all struggling with it, because the state doesn't have their model ordinance out for this yet, and then I think I'll still work, you know, as well.
Well, Highlands is gonna use ours.
They liked, they liked ours.
They won't be able to figure out the speech. Thank you. So that's, this is, I think, um, the reason is right, it's, the tree is defined as five inches in diameter. Five inches in diameter, here.
Dennis Taylor? What?
Second.
I was there. Then we got the man from August fourteen, one twenty-four. I just have comments when you're on the chat base, my name is spelled with just one L.
All right. Under what?
You know. That they said one L?
Well, I think, oh. Yes, we have new alternatives. And on the very last page on our Judy's comments, we actually had the hundred in games, we didn't have the hundred games.
Oh, that's great, that's great. It said, it said hundred games.
The little one there. They can load it up separately, minutes of the amendment? Or we had to be both, or?
Nah, just separate, cause there are different people, it's in like second.
So which one will it be?
Fourteen.
Further than that? I was in favor.
And now twenty. There's, there's. Yeah, just behind it. Sorry, there's a lot of different things in this package, so.
Oh, okay, so wait, so the hundred in games was, uh.
The twenty-eight.
Yeah. Twenty-eight, so it's so different.
And the one thing that's missing is, I missed in here, is that Kenny announced about, uh, Daniel McManaman, and it's not in here, so I need to add that, so it needs to be amended to include that.
Where do you want to have it?
Under the chairman.
Or, if you care.
Yeah.
That one, I was just popped up, but, I mean, why don't you just, on the reports in the board, it says deputy mayor, and this one, it says councilman. Is it really a good one?
I always put that wrong when I thought of this. I, I, I didn't. So he's not to that, yeah. Listen, the last. You wanna take that out? No, no.
All right, so I'll take a motion, that we accept the minutes as amended to, to the right. Deputy Mayor, the hundred in games, the hundred, and the reservation of Daniel McManaman.
Yeah, it's just a mess.
Second motion.
And, and follow, follow that, just otherwise there are lots of. Daniel, you can't say that, I'll say it.
No, that's Daniel McManaman. We need to debate this more because you. Now we just have the hose in here.
Yeah.
So it needs to be so long, that's pretty long, so. Yeah, it should be mad.
Okay, awesome. I was in favor. Very interesting. Jose Reyes, you're very quiet tonight. You're very quiet.
I'm, I'm trying to listen to everyone talk at the same time.
Right, Danny, not one?
None of us there.
No, nothing.
Um, Monica, do you want to bring up the? This is a sub meeting.
Um, yeah, so, um, the draft of the master plan, um. A, B, and C has been received, been sent out to the subcommittee, subcommittee is meeting, we assume on Wednesday. And so, um, that should get us to the next step with the master plan review.
What are we planning for that meeting? Is it gonna be like an hour, hour and a half, or two hours, or just a definite?
I could not ask her how long it needs, but it probably, I think it'll be about an hour.
Fifty days, there. So it's, it's fifty something days, so. Yeah, but I mean, a lot of this. It's important for word, I think it's gonna be a, I mean, you're gonna read it on your own, of course, for word, but I don't. Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is really charts and graphs that, that, you know, that we really, you know, you can just kind of familiarize yourself with it, but it's demographics showing, you know. What's changed in the town, which is something that we have to, um, consider when we're doing the reevaluation. But it's not, you know, we're not gonna argue with those numbers or anything like that. Uh, there's maps, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, um, that isn't really anything that we have to, if we read this through beforehand. You know, there's nothing that we're changing on this. You know, we're just looking to help us guide, do it.
I was gonna say, cause there were some things in here that I was concerned about, so, for example, she had, you know, the risk of fires as being very low. You know, when I look at our woods and see all the dead trees and all the trees on the ground. Um, personally, I, I, I'm actually worried about fires, especially with the weather changes we've been having. Um, the other thing is with all the dead wooden, was, you know, I remember on Strats Road, the bridge right there where Norton Church comes together. It would cloud that up, it was two feet deep in water going over the, the bridge there and flooding out places, so.
And but what, what land use issue would address that?
I guess.
The tree order?
Not the tree order, no, but it, it about, uh, taking the wildlife and understanding the issues of the demographic, how it can affect our town, where, where we should be putting money, cause that was also. How that was listed in here, on how we should be investing and being worried about, I think we really need to take an order, you know, I don't know, it's a, uh. A look at our woodlands here to find out how much dead is, how much, you know, where are the risks for a wildfire, what needs to be done? Is there something we need to be doing?
I also have issues with some of the tone used, uh, when it's talking about, uh. Our, um, when we put restrictions, instead of saying restrictions, it, she says severe restrictions. Uh, there's a certain tone that I'm concerned about. Um, it's almost, uh, judgmental. I'm concerned about that. We have, we have had restrictions for a good reason, that's what the town wants. You know, as far as growth, it's, uh, development, but to call all restrictions severe, it's. And there are, there's a number of sentences like that, that, they're almost judgmental, so we have to look at how it's viewed. From the outside in this community that is very much trying to keep its way of life and the way things are today. So when you put something down that we all know, we have certain restrictions, but to call them severe and would limit future growth, I have an issue with that. So, that's the type of thing I like to discuss at this meeting.
The, the, those things that she, that, that she was writing there were what the master plan, um. Um, examination came up with last time, that came from us, not from her.
Uh, there's a couple of things that were added, I've been comparing them. Okay? So, uh, you know, there's certain wording. That I would prefer not to see, but again, that's for Wednesday's meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be Wednesday if you guys, so maybe two, three hours.
I don't think so, uh, well, I have, uh, what is the status of putting the, uh, current master plan on the website?
Uh, Lou, have you been working on that at all?
No, I haven't started, but be happy to get it done. Who's got it?
Yeah, you said we had to ask Lou to do it, uh, so I'll have to find some. Yeah, I don't know if you even have a digital version of it.
We do, I have.
Then we get it to Lou and let him.
I'll go and send it. I'm, I'm feeling like I'm gonna be here a while after you guys. Or tomorrow.
Okay, so Lou, you're again, email Monica?
Sure.
And then you'll have to.
Thank you.
Put a link together and, uh. We don't do it every, on top of that document. It's a PDF, I'm just gonna put it as a document.
It's a PDF. That's how, uh, I sent it to.
This document that, uh, is being used on the Wednesday meeting, should that be put online, by the way?
No.
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 Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Are we, are you collecting these again, or?
I would like to collect them so that I know exactly who has them, so I don't have to reproduce. And that way, well, cause all the documents, when we go through the public hearing is in there, so.
Yeah, but everyone has a problem.
And is everybody gonna bring it back?
Yeah, everyone bring it back, you gotta have a chance to go through it.
Kindergarten teacher, I'm just. I, I just wanna know what I need to produce every time you guys commit, and not.
I appreciate it. Oh, is there anything, do you have anything else?
Nobody's taking theirs off.
Jose, anything?
No.
No.
He's calling mine for trust. All right, uh, Phil? Go to the journal. Second. Oh, the favor.
All right.
Good night.
Hey, hey, I have a quick question, does anyone know what the state is doing, that have one sub, down on one seventy-three in front of Johnny's truck stop? Is that?
The one you had with Johnny's?
Is that the remediation for the, uh, traffic problem at Johnny's or Pilot? It looks like it started a large project down on one seventy-three near Pilot.
Bunch of, uh, payers and stuff like that.
No, they're, they're just, uh, they're repaving once again.
They're, they're working on the bridges, the bike, the cross bridges, and now it's like, hey.
Yeah, that's just the, you know, why, no, there's just.
That's a hello. Hello.
Yeah.
They put a, a Tesla supercar, and they put the station down, but I'm happy.
Yeah.
Jose.
Another, another three weeks will be over.
Jose, I have a copy of the draft for you printed, do you want it or no? And I can leave it with, um, Christine here if you want it.